Mr. Chair, we're here with the Attorney General. Justice Schara.
Okay. Today, the town of Burlington will be holding the June 6, 2024 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31, 2025.
As always, the town of Burlington will be holding the June 6 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31, 2025. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for attendance is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members with a particular interest in any specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend remotely may do so via the URL townofberlincolnwebx.com. The meeting number is 2343-031-7913, and the meeting password is 1645. You can also join the WebEx via phone at 617-315-0704. Members of the public looking to participate, please raise your hand in the WebEx, and staff will send you a request to unmute yourself at the appropriate time. The meeting is being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon Channel 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
Okay. Looks, thank you very much, staff. We have a continuance, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take Item 7D out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Okay. Motion 7D is a continued public hearing, an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9 fast food establishments of the zoning bylaw 101 Millsex Turnpike. Tate Holdings LLC is the applicant. Oh, take it out of order. That's it. Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's going to be 6-0.
I'd also like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of June 20, 2024, at the request of the applicant's attorney, and email dated June 6, 2024.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Again, 6-0. Thank you. Okay. So, before we move on, I just want to address some items. As a longtime member but first-time chair of the planning board, in this role, it's my duty to provide an efficient and fair environment for all those involved in our process. This includes members, applicants, and members of the public. In order to achieve the balance, we employ Robert's Rules of Order, as stated in our Planning Board Procedure rules. That applies to all town and government meetings. The intent of these meetings is to keep our meetings on track and only to ensure we maximize what we continue to get them accomplished. While we don't need strict adherence, we'd like all meeting participants to address questions and comments through me, the chair, and I'll decide who is recognized to speak. My goal is to ensure that we get business done by resolving issues in a way that's fair to everyone taking part in the process. Particularly tonight, we want to get it done right around 8:30 before we have a lot of eyes are not going to be on us tonight live, anyway. With that said, we will now move on to public participation. Staff, do we have anybody online or anybody in the audience?
We do, but there's a second section that I think--
Oh, public participation.
--a little bit, yep.
All right. Public participation is used by anyone to speak on an item that is not before the board during this time. During the meeting, all speakers must first identify themselves, and I give them a maximum of three minutes to speak. I'll then determine whether or not to recognize members of the staff or the planning board for additional discussion. It's recommended that the speaker provide an email address, as planning staff will follow up. As a reminder, our staff can be reached anytime over email at the following address: planning@berlincoln.org. Now, is there anyone in the audience or online that is available for public participation?
Mr. Chairman, we have one member online.
Okay.
Bob, I'm going to send you an unmute request right now. It should pop up on your screen, and then you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. It's Bob Young, Three Valley Circle, and I'm wanting to raise what I think is an important safety issue that I'd like the board to look into, and I'd like to participate with that review. And what I'm talking about is vehicles that are, you know, crafting into various retail and other types of properties around Massachusetts, really around this country. Unfortunately, we've had a couple of specific examples in Burlington that I can point to. On Tuesday, 12/12/23, at the All Eye Care doctor off of Mall Road, that's in the cafe Nero Plaza, a car went, SUV went right through the storefront. It was very, very fortunate, no one was looking at glasses. I've looked at the video, it's pretty amazing and fortunate no one was hurt. I say unfortunate again, it was a second issue with Santander Bank on Cambridge Street. I don't have the date, but that was within the last, I'd say, six months. Again, unfortunately, no one was hurt, but also a lot of damage to that particular business. The third example I want to mention is unfortunately in Massachusetts. It happened on April, excuse me, I don't have the exact date, but it was within the last, actually, I might, November 21, 2022, I believe, down in Hingle, Massachusetts, on the South Shore. It's called the Apple Store Crash, where a vehicle at a high rate of speed went right through the front of the store and well into the store, unfortunately killing one construction worker and injuring 17 other people. So, these situations do occur, and unfortunately, property, people are injured and sometimes killed. So, I do think it's an important issue. We have unfortunately some specific examples right in this town. So, I'd like to suggest that the board look at perhaps permanent crash guards for any new businesses, retail especially, or any of those seeking a rehab of existing retail businesses. But really, my point is to try to raise awareness of this and see if we can work towards a solution that will be helpful for the safety of all in Burlington.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Young. So, I'll comment on that, and if anybody else on the board does, but I think what the board does, in fact, put those in place, they're called bollards, so if you can review any past planning board meeting and you heard the talk about bollards, those in fact are what they are. They're metal and concrete posts that are dug into foundations to prohibit cars from going into retail establishments. I think everyone, I would say, of recent, we put balls in place. You might also hear us asking to put planters in front of stores, and when we say planters, in our mind, it's actually a planter, a concrete planter, acting as a bollard. So, the bollard is that term we use to protect those retail establishments, and I can't remember one that we haven't put it on. Going back to existing establishments, unfortunately, we can't go back in time and apply that to past items that have come before the planning board. So, the ones that are coming up now, you'll see going back to planning board minutes, that bollards are prominently noted. So, we continue to look at that seriously, and again, I don't know anyone that hasn't come before us that we haven't requested bollards. Anybody from staff, want to, staff or planning board that wants to talk to that more?
No.
I think we're good. Great, then. Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay. Announcements.
The zoning bylaw review committee will meet next Wednesday, June 12, at 6:30 p.m., and that will be virtual via Zoom. The same night, the Fox Hill Elementary School will be giving community updates, so it's Wednesday, June 12, that will be at 7:00 p.m., and that's going to be virtual over WebEx. Town shredding day is Saturday, June 15, and that'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in the town hall parking lot. Juneteenth will be observed on Wednesday, June 19, and all town offices will be closed that day. The Pigs on Parade will be Saturday, June 22, at 10:00 a.m. on the Town Common. Member Lerue, is there anything else that you would like to add to that?
I'm just inviting everyone to come. I'd like to invite my fellow board members to come. I will be inviting all the other boards and committees as well. We're expecting a wonderful turnout, and it should be a whole lot of fun. There are going to be food trucks and 16 sculptural pigs revealed on that day. And then I have a special message for Burlington children, that starting next week, there will be 100 teeny tiny pigs hidden in the parks and the playgrounds where you like to play. Go and find them and bring them to the common on Saturday, the 22nd, so that they can join in the big pig party.
Can I interject?
Go ahead, please.
All town offices will be closed, but schools will be closed too. So, those parents who are trying to figure out Neon Day and, you know, Picnic Day and all those other things, June 19 is also school closing.
Hmm, okay.
Didn't know that.
Oh, thank you.
Calling from my mom.
Next, we wanted to share that, I'm going to pull it up on the screen here, that there is a poster for the Hazard Mitigation Plan. There will be a public workshop for this on Wednesday, June 26, at 6:00 p.m., and that's going to be hybrids. That will be in the town hall annex basement as well as virtual via WebEx. We'd be happy to kind of, this was last done by the town in 2016, so this is an update to that plan. And there's also on this poster, you can see that there is a link that if you are a Burlington resident, that we encourage you to take a look at that. It's a quick survey that you can fill out to be able to help as we put together this plan. Lastly, we want to just quickly recap that at May town meeting, there was four zoning articles that went to the town meeting body. The MBTA Communities was approved and put Burlington in compliance with state law. The police station project was approved, both for the funding and the rezoning. The parking and landscaping modernization was approved, as well as the use table modernization was all approved.
Thank you for the announcements. I just want to say with the town meeting, I'd like to thank staff for all the work that they've done with those items. You know, you got the modernization of the parking and landscaping table. In addition to that, MBTA, as everyone knows, has been the news quite a bit, and all that complicated work on that one. So, thank you, staff.
Agreed.
Do any other members have announcements? Okay, let's go on. Diag, have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take Agenda Item 9A2 out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's 700. Okay, that's a discussion. 9.8.2 is a town meeting warrant process with town council.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
So, thank you for having me here this evening. What I wanted to come talk to you about is the warrant process in regards specifically to zoning. So, I've been town council for about five years, and then there's been kind of a changeover in the town administrator's office in the last three to four years. And we've been trying to make a process for zoning amendments that is less confusing and less cumbersome, and is frankly, less expensive than what happens right now. And so, we've tried on a number of occasions, borrowers participated, the chair of the Land Use Committee, and the ZBRC, and the planner, all participated in trying to figure out these dates and whether or not we move updates and we push back dates. Really, what it comes down to is a process question I just want to throw out to everybody. In, so, you know, you kind of scramble, we have multiple advertisements, you advertise, then you discuss the zoning often instead of discussing it and then moving through it. So, we want to talk about maybe you thinking about a slightly different process moving forward. And this process is employed in many communities. It's kind of the way the zoning act is laid out, even though it doesn't tell you how you need to get to the advertisement, it's the way it's laid out. And so, we think it'll be more fluid, it will allow for more input, a little less pressure on the planning board, and then the staff putting together the warrant. And then finally, you advertise really what the board really wants the public to see, generally as a final product. And so, here, I would like you to consider a process where you actually make the sausage and then put it on the grill, as opposed to putting it on the grill and then making the sausage. Okay? So, if you have an idea for new zoning, it comes to you and the board talks about it, right? And then the board says to the staff, for example, let's give this a whirl, right? And I'm going to take something that Liz and I talked about today. I know you're looking at middle housing, right? So, you talk about it, and what are the kinds of things that you want to see in middle housing? What are the things you don't want to see? What are the things you want to see? Do you have a general idea of where the area should be? Are there any things you want to stay away from? You give those parameters to staff. Staff draft something, right? Then it comes back to you, you say, is this, you know, is this really what we're looking at? And you consider that again. This is all at public meetings, not yet public hearings, but it's an item on your agenda. So, then you get that to the part that you think, okay, this is pretty good, we like it. Let's bring in the ZBRC and the Land Use Committee. Ask them to come in. Give them a copy of it. Say, we want to talk with you about this, or you can give us your comments before a certain period of time, but give us your comments now, right? Let's talk about it now. Then, once you have all those comments and you decide, okay, let's do this, you have staff draft a document that is what you think is going to be the document, like you're pretty close, that's it. Then you advertise it for a public hearing. And that advertisement happens well in advance of town meetings. So, let's say you advertise so that when the hearing happens, it's at least two weeks or three weeks before when the warrant is closed. So, in the meantime, Liz has put a placeholder in place, and all she's done is say, here, we're going to do middle housing. And so, you've got a place on the warrant, so you don't need to worry about that. But then you have the public hearing, and you get the final input on it. Hopefully, it's just tweaks and not substantive matters. And then that gets provided to the staff to go on the warrant. And that way, the work happens upfront instead of after a hearing happens. And I, you know, I think that that's a process that is going to be helpful in the end because the final document that gets advertised is what actually then goes on the warrant, and it doesn't have to change 15 times before the time is submitted and then the time the warrant happens. So, I'd like to answer any questions about that or see how you feel about that.
Okay, yeah, we'll open it up to the board members. Ernie, we'll start.
How, so, it actually ends up on the agenda as a public meeting, the discussion?
Yes.
And then, once Land Use and ZBRC look at it, it then goes to the formal hearing process?
That's the idea. So, just like this matters on the public meeting agenda today, right?
Now, how far before the print date would you suggest the public hearing start?
Well, I would want your public hearing to, ideally, if you have one night of a public hearing, right? Because then you've done all your work, right? So, if you have one night of a public hearing, ideally, that night is two weeks or so before that the warrant is due to be printed, is due to go off to the printer. Right now, what happens is you have the public hearing, and not everybody's got the input, and then the day before the warrant, right?
I have, I have a fear that the, that that public hearing, or was it new comments that will then change what we're doing. So, I would like to see that public hearing far enough ahead of the print date so that we don't have to go to print with something that we don't end up with on town.
I think--
What would you suggest?
I'm fine with that. You just move, you just have to move everything up. I mean, part of the, one of the things you have to think about, and it's tough in town because we have three town meetings a year, right? And particularly, the May to September one is really tight. And so, you're all preparing for May, 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 then May town meeting happens, and you have four weeks before something has to be happening. So, maybe you collectively decide that September might not be the day for a lot of things unless you've been working on them previously, right?
Yeah, right.
And then you just, you start it more as a fluid process. I think I'll use the example only because I'm looking across the hall. So, you have the mall zoning that's been happening, right? But it's been, it's been going through the wringer a lot, right? It's been going through that sausage maker a lot. But now, Melissa wants it on the September town meeting, I think. So, you know, now, you're going to have that public hearing. So, that's been a fluid thing. She's been updating people and moving through it. It's not like she's like, oh, I have to get it on this town meeting. So, I think if you work on the zoning, you say, okay, this is ready to go, and then you say, okay, we're going to put it on that town meeting, right? As opposed to using the town meeting to decide how you're going to do your zoning. You do your zoning, and then it gets on a town meeting.
Maybe it's, maybe it's the public meeting process that should be longer now that I'm thinking.
Well, I also think that, Ernie, just, I'm sorry to interject, but Melissa's a town employee.
Right.
So, that's her focal point, right?
No, right.
And so, now we have ZBRC, who are volunteers, and we have other committees who are volunteers.
Right.
And then, you know, then we have the elected officials, and some of the committees, while there is absolute 100% value, sometimes don't necessarily--
Time to do their homework.
Time to do their homework, and furthermore, and I'm probably getting hung on the Town Common for saying this, but they don't have the final say, not--
Right.
--planning board and zoning board. And all of their work is absolutely valued, but the interaction and the communication between these boards and these subcommittees who support the elected and appointed officials, I think that the process in that respect is something that needs to be worked on.
I--
So, that, I think, is really the focal point. It's not, do we need to work sooner? It's how do we work together to be focused on the end result--
Yeah.
--that we're all trying to achieve.
Yeah. So, I don't disagree with you at all. In fact, that's how we've been--
You're going to pull the noose off my neck after I get--
Yeah, great. So, we, so we've been meeting with all, I mean, this happens, and we meet, and we say, oh. So, I don't disagree, and I, and you certainly can't be held up in your work. And because those committees have to comment before we go to town meeting, my hope is, and, you know, I'm going to talk to them too, my hope is, is that they come in earlier in the process. That's really what needs to happen, right? And people need to be flexible about when that happens and how it happens.
Agreed. Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead. Ernie, you all set?
Yeah.
I also feel that, you know, let's be honest, the planning board has a lot of commitments, and it's a lot of time-consuming investment to, while we are paid officials--
Right.
--it's a fruit basket at the end of the day. And I'm okay with that because the love of my community is really my focal point. But I think that some of these subcommittees want to be part of, but don't want to give the same investment that we do. And that's not to say that they're wrong, but again, I think that it's the communication and the process as a whole that needs to be revamped, and the understanding and how they contribute to the other boards that are putting this investment forward is something that needs to be focused on. And I know that I spoke with Selectman Priest on numerous occasions, and some of the other select board members, on reviewing each person's role within the community to understand how they're contributing and how we actually get to the end result that we're looking for.
Yeah. And through you, Mr. Chair, I don't disagree at all. The reality is, this, you carry the weight here, right? And so, I wanted to talk to you about this first because we've, for four years, and that's no lie, we've tried to have these meetings and bring people in and try to do it. And so, we keep thinking that it's going to happen, and it hasn't. So, we've been chatting, I'm like, okay, I'm going to come to the planning board because the planning board is where the rubber meets the road, right? And so, you have other people that have to provide information, but if you, if you set up a process, they're going to do what they're going to do. Our goal is to communicate with them and bring them in, but it's your process.
Chair?
Yeah.
It's kind of like that old school saying, everybody wants to tell you how to do it, but nobody wants to do it.
Yeah, I hear you.
And that's, I think that, you know, I've been on zoning board, I've been on town meeting, and I've, you know, been on the board for a little bit, and I've learned that, like I said, everybody wants to tell you how to do it.
Yeah.
They don't understand the process.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, ultimately, I think a great thing for the community would be to actually tell people how this process works, especially where, you know, we're working on Fox Hill, and we're working on the police station, and we're talking about the discussions with the high school. Nobody really understands exactly how this process works. So, there's the school committee, and then there's the planning board, and there's all these subcommittees. And, you know, constituents show up to these meetings, and then they throw stones, and they don't understand who does what. So, maybe an info session on how town politics and, you know, how a town works would be very prosperous for the community as a whole. And then, in turn, we discuss how the communities, how each committee, you know, interacts with each other, and then we go forward.
I think it's a great idea.
Another great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would assume that what you intend with this is that other committees, such as ZBRC and Land Use, would come in during the public meeting process, and therefore, we would have their input before we opened the public hearing. That would be ideal.
Uh-huh.
So, I like this idea. I think this makes sense. I think when it comes to the item that we're discussing later tonight, the middle housing, we either can't go in September, or we can't follow this process because it's already getting really late. Because as you said--
Right.
--the deadline is a couple of weeks away. So, that'll be something we all have to decide as a group later tonight, but I do think this makes sense.
Blessings.
And I hope it would make things more smooth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you. Member Sutherland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would agree with Member Lerue that I feel like this process makes a lot of sense. I do believe that behavior happens because if you give them all the time in the world, they're going to take all the time in the world. And so, I think by saying we have a public hearing super close to the deadline, which means, yes, a lot of people don't do their homework, but I think it's because it's a behavior based on the process that, I mean, I don't see a big harm in changing the process, and I think it's going to force the fact that the public hearing, we have to come with all the i's dotted and the t's crossed and the information provided. So, I would definitely like to see giving this process a whirl. And I do agree that September might not be the time for the item we discussed, but I do think actually that would be a great item for us to institute this process because we will want a lot of committee inputs. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pembah.
I really just, unless I see it actually enacted, and I'm not sure that, I'm not, I guess I'm not convinced it'll be more, less cumbersome, or will it be more cumbersome? I'm not sure how, time-wise, how it's going to, you know, how that's going to be any better. I know, I guess what we're saying is we're going to be, it's going to be more discussion time here prior to. I guess that, it's all well and good during certain times, but if there's, you know, we know there's times, especially a few years ago, when we were getting out at 1:00 in the morning sometimes, and then, you know, is this going to be more cumbersome on the board if we get busy, if the town gets busy and the planning board gets busy? Is that going to be something that's going to work, or, I don't know. I guess I'd have to see it almost on a test basis to see, you know, how it would make it more efficient. So, I guess that's not a lot of input. It's more just saying I'm not--
Give it a shot.
I'm open for, you know, seeing it and seeing how it works, and I'm open to be convinced that it is more efficient, and maybe it is. So, that's--
Okay. Member Natawa.
Yes, so, do you mean everybody, if we're opening the meeting up at the same time, bring in Land Use and ZBRC, everybody all together at the same time, so we're all doing it together?
So, I would say you, because zoning is yours, right? And so, I would say you come up with what you think is going to be the, you know, you're pretty confident about what you want in a zoning article. And then you invite them to one of your meetings and say, okay, we want your, you give it to them ahead of time, obviously, and you say, come to this meeting because we're going to advertise it for a public hearing later, but we want your input now. And I know that you try to do that now. I want to be, I want to recognize that. I know that you try to do and get their input before that. So, bring them into the meeting, see what we can do with it, and then after you have that input, finalize whatever you're going to finalize, and then advertise it.
So, but if you're saying we do that now, what part--
Well, it's not formalized. I think that they come, they don't come. I think that they come, they don't come, you know, I'm trying to, trying to formalize it a little bit to see if we can make it happen.
Chair?
Go ahead.
There are times that some of these subcommittees propose things to former chair. These committees come to us with proposed items. So it's not a matter of us, we're not always, you know, the idea makers.
Right.
There are people that come to us and say, what do you think about X, Y, Z?
Yeah.
And who do an exuberant amount of work. And again, all appreciated, but at the end of the day, as you said, we're the ones that, you know, we are the ones that, that make the zoning. So how do you explain or how do you propose that we handle those situations? And furthermore, what constitutes the extra expense?
What constitutes what?
You said, if we do this, then we'll minimize expenses. What constitutes the extra expense that you speak of?
Sure, the multiple advertisements that happen in order to gather all the changes and then the, all of the stuff that happens in that office over there frankly, and in, in Liz's time and my time.
Sure.
To redo, 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 right.
So how do you propose if we have a subcommittee or another committee that's not elected or appointed proposes a zoning or another article that is within our purview, how do you propose that we address that if they've already done their homework on the back end and bring it to us?
Yep, absolutely. And those are the, there are two exceptions that I haven't talked about yet. So two are, for example, you've got a set of corrections that are gonna go in to the use table, right? That's easy. You, everybody knows what those corrections are. You have a public hearing on that in a reasonable period of time, you know, and, and that done, that closes off. You get a proposal from a property owner, right? And that, that you're required to have a public hearing on and you can't start, you can't do the same kind of process. So you have your public hearing and there are changes and it either doesn't happen or it does happen and it moves forward. Similarly, if you have a committee that is coming to you and saying, this is our idea, then you have to decide, you know, do we need to have more time with this or are we ready to advertise it? That, I mean, I think that's the decision you make.
Mr. Pemba, I'm sorry. We'll hit the stage, so Mr. Pemba for a second.
So I, I guess part of my process, my head I'm thinking through is, like you, you, you explain it like the process of making sausage beforehand and not, but now the sausage, the sausage making becomes more, more public, right? It's, it's more public and it, I, I would tend to think it would be, inhibitions would be, you know, play more of a role in creativity, like it wouldn't necessarily be as creative of a process or, you know, as much discussion as might take place if it wasn't, if the sausage making wasn't public. You know, there's a reason why you don't want the sausage making really public. And I know you're saying make it ahead of time, but they're making it ahead of time, even though, you know, all the meetings that they have, I'm sure are public meetings and they all.
Right, they're all public meetings.
Yeah, but they're just not, you know.
Let's be honest, they don't show up for all those meetings. Nobody shows up for those meetings. When you find, when you get to the, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
When you finally get to that end result and when it's publicized and it's on, you know, on Facebook and, and all the other forums, now actually people are paying attention. It's when the buzz, the buzz is created.
Right.
And, you know, when I'll say the buzz, because Burlington buzz, when it is spoken for, that's when actually people show up. It's not a matter of, we could have, we could have several public hearings, but unless it's put forth within the community, we don't get, I mean, we, I think, I can, I can speak for the board as a whole, we do get feedback because we, we get calls from constituents, you know, all over, like, all, all the time. But unless they're informed about that, nobody's paying attention to really what we're doing. We're, we're in the thick of things. We talk about MBTA communities, we talk about mall rezoning, we talk about all of these things. And unless you're in the thick of it, this is our lingo, this is our language, like we, we eat and breathe and sleep this. Our community doesn't necessarily always pay attention to it. So until, like, we could make the sausage, spice the sausage, cook the sausage, it's not until the roll, like, once it's on the roll, that's when actually people show up and then we're reworking the wheel again because they're finally communicating.
Okay, Mr. Pemba.
And to follow the thought process, I'm not, again, I think there's some pluses and minuses about making the sausage in public. Just, those are things that I think are gonna have to be thought out before we really figure out if that's the avenue we would wanna take. I would say, you know, you really gotta think that out because, you know, as I said, there, there could be some negatives about that happening, the stifling of ideas and creativity and, and discussion, time limits maybe, but at, at the other side of it, you know, it's a more public forum that people can actually see how it's being made as well. So I think that's the plus side of it. You know, we're elected officials, they should be seeing everything that's going on with us.
Member Cavino.
Yeah, I was thinking that, number one, even when we get to the public hearing process, I think we're, we, we have to realize that somebody could still come up with a change, major change, that we haven't thought of or hasn't been brought up during the public hearing process. So we have to recognize that that could happen. But in order to limit some of the situations that's been going on, I've been involved with the ZBRC for a while, so I, and, and planning board obviously, so I understand, maybe we could ask at least the formal committees that would comment to us during the public hearing process to comment by a certain date and, and, and try and hold that date. In other words, you know, we want your comments by the meeting, the public hearing meeting before we advertise.
Yep.
And if you give them to us after that, be aware that we may not be able to take them into account, period. And try and hold that line, that would be up to, hopefully, the chairman and, and staff to reinforce that. And I think that would, that would make it cleaner at least. And like I say, when we got to the public hearing process, don't be surprised if it's been popped up out of the woodwork.
Right.
Hopefully that would be the, the apparition and not the normal.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I think this is worth pursuing.
Member Leru.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was my understanding that we would be bringing in formal committees such as ZBRC and Land Use during the public meeting process. So that by the time we get to the public hearing, we've already incorporated their comments.
Correct.
Now, as, as Member Cavino said, something could still come and surprise us, but at least then we would have had their input before that.
Correct.
So I think the trick is going to be communicating well with those other committees so that they know when in our process they need to get their comments to us. Because once we open the public hearing, we should already have incorporated what we're going to incorporate from them.
Right.
Correct?
I, I totally agree. That, that's the goal, right? That's the goal. And, and I hear, you know, the members' comments relative to the, so it's all public meetings, right? We all work in the public meeting format, even if it's in subcommittees. So, but maybe you break it down like that in certain instances, maybe not in all instances, but maybe there are subcommittees that, you know, that work on the push in the poll and everything before it gets to here again. But I think that those are all ways to accommodate that. I think you make a good point, but it all has to be talked about in the, in the public in any event.
Member Leru.
One last thing, I think to address Member Pemba's concern, I think some of this won't happen on camera. It will happen, as you said, in subcommittee meetings where there is a little more freedom to be creative. So I would hope that happens still.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the only comment I would have is that we talked about, you know, meeting the dates and from my experience on the planning board for a number of years, I, I see a lot of maybe zoning that's not ready for prime time, although the applicant, not internally, but external applicants believe it is. And at that point, if they don't, if we don't believe that they're ready, practice has been, well, okay, well, we'll, we'll just let town meeting vote on it. And because they won't take our input anyway, which is kinda frustrating, where is there, is there, is there a way or do other towns basically hold to those dates or if they, if they're not ready for prime time, do they say the board does not, is not gonna forward that to town meeting?
No, the, the sad thing is 48, section five requires you to do it, right? You, you're required, well, there's a couple of different ways you can do it. So if an applicant comes in, if a proponent comes in with a zoning change, it goes to the select board then over to you, you're required to hold a public hearing on it. And depending on what, what the relationship is between public hearing, closing and town meeting, you're required to give recommendations. You can give a recommendation or not a recommendation, but if 60 days passes after the close of the public hearing and you haven't given a recommendation, it can be heard at town meeting. If you close the public hearing but don't give a recommendation and 60 days doesn't pass, town meeting may not hear it. So there is a way to look at the statute in a way and hold, and time your public hearings depending on the flexibility of the proponent and the desires of the planning board. But you are required to hold a public hearing.
Right.
On the matter. But you're required to open a public hearing on the matter.
Right, okay. Thank you. And the only other comment I would say is that I'm a big fan of benchmarking other towns. So if, if, if you know of maybe multiple towns that have a piece of this or a piece of that and say, here's how we've seen, as, as you, you know, represent multiple municipalities, what's, what's the best practice? I think we could probably benefit from that.
Yeah. And I can do that. And I will tell you, the subcommittee route seems to be the most efficient route. And then, you know, it's worked on and then it comes to the board for a discussion and then back to the subcommittee and the, the board. And then they, you know, they eventually move it on to town meeting depending on everybody's feeling about it.
Okay, thank you. Any other members? Yes, go ahead.
So in benchmarking other communities, the subcommittees, is there a term limit or are these people, are they appointed, are they volunteers or?
Right. So I'm, I'm gonna give you a recent example. I have a town's working on, has been working on the MBTA zoning, right? And so they have a select board member, they have a planning board member, they have the planning staff and a consultant, right? And then, so they worked on it, they took it to the planning board, planning board pushed back on some things, had some discussion about it, went back, you know, back and forth, back and forth. And ultimately there was actually a last minute change. It had been advertised, there was a last minute change and they decided not to put it on. They didn't close the public hearing, they decided not to put it on the warrant because they, some things happened and they were like, woo, jeez, I need to change this. So, but it was a very effective process, went back and forth, back and forth. But those, those were the people that were on that, that particular subcommittee.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So that being said, was that, was the allocation of the members on that subcommittee something that the town had dictated? Or was, like, how was, how was that subcommittee comport, like?
Yeah, it was a discussion with the town manager, the planner, the chair of the planning board and then the chair of the select board and the interested members. I think one of the members was like on the Affordable Housing Trust too. So it wasn't dictated, it was kind of a mutual, you know.
Hold on, just a second.
So, so I guess where I'm going is, is we have some subcommittees and, which is a discussion we're gonna have this evening, that we're a part of where we have a vote. Planning board actually has a vote to dictate what the next steps are. And then we have subcommittees where there is no vote. And I think that that might be something that needs to be revisited because at the end of the day, anything that's built in this town has to come back in front of the planning board. So if there's a school that's built, if there's a police, like, station that's gonna be built, fire station, whatever, at the end of the day, it all has to come back in front of planning board. And if we're having subcommittees where we don't have an active vote, I think that we're not doing our job.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just talking about zoning matters.
Well, I'm just saying, it, it, as a whole, these subcommittees that, whether it be zoning, you know, a sculpture park, a school, whatever. Some of these are conditional experiments or some of them are change in zoning.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Pemba.
Yeah, so the question I guess was, is a subcommittee what? But if it's a zoning matter, it should be a subcommittee of the planning board, yeah?
So my, my point is, it can be whatever you want it to be, right? So it could be only a subcommittee of the planning board, if that's what you want it to be.
No, I mean a subcommittee of, not, not comprised of the planning board, it's a subcommittee of the planning board. So it's our board, it's a subcommittee of our board. We create it, we, we, we charter, you know, basically, you know, determine what the charter's gonna be on it. We determine all that and we create it. Versus a subcommittee of the board of select, a subcommittee of, you know.
That, that, so the example I gave you, it was, there was no, there wasn't a subcommittee of anybody, right?
So it's not really a subcommittee, it's kind of a.
It was a working group.
Yeah.
It was a working group, right? It was a working group. And, and they all saw the benefit of doing that, right? So it was a working group.
Okay, great.
However you wanna call it, right?
Okay, any other members, any comments? Staff or anything?
Just wanted to say how, kind of how I envision this happening from, from my perspective and administering it. So, you know, when you guys say we wanna explore this topic, so middle housing, what I would probably do is, you know, we would start out, kind of get your, you know, opinions on things, set a subcommittee, do work in a subcommittee, put it.
Kind of as a subcommittee of the planning board?
Of the planning board, so two of you, three of you, however many. Then I would put it on our agenda under administrative matters as a discussion item. So it's on the agenda, so it's public, it's, it's public on our agenda. So we would be discussing, you know, what happened at that meeting, progress, all that stuff, so it's part of the public record. Then we go back to subcommittee, planning board subcommittee until, you know, it's time to get, to open the public hearing. Once we've had, you know, we've invited ZBRC, you know, Land Use, then it would come back to, you know, open the public hearing and then go from there. So is that essentially what you're?
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Over to you, any, one more.
Question for Attorney Mead. Since the ZBRC was initially, their mandate is to make sure that the.
Language, right?
Language, yes. The text of the zoning bylaw period is, is clear and concise and appropriate and to recommend so to town meetings, it's, it's a committee of town meetings, it's town meetings committee. They may not be able to, they, they in the past have not actually voted until the planning board has voted because they want to see the finished product. So that would, in, in this case, that would, that would probably, if there were changes made from the final public meeting, then that would still happen. How would you, I guess, I guess you can't avoid that.
So I, I, well, they're gonna do what they're gonna do. My recommendation is that they do that review prior to the public hearing advertisement.
Yeah, what I'm, what, where I'm going is so that my boards get changed from the public meeting to the final planning board, they're gonna wanna look at it again and say, yep, okay, that works, that doesn't work, you should have a D here instead of an A or whatever, you know.
Right. And I, and I wanna, I would want to give them drafts earlier so that if there was anything that they could do then and then have them make the final comment before the public hearing process is advertised.
Okay.
Okay.
Last thing I wanna say, you say, give them the drafts, give them whatever our comments are. I, I feel like at the end of the day, if it comes in front of us, we should be controlling these subcommittees, review committees or whatever it is, which wants to get reiterates, what I'm saying is, I think there needs to be a review of how these committees interact and who controls, who is on these subcommittees and how, how they're populated.
Right, but so part of the.
They're not.
Right, you don't, you don't get to have that control over the ZBRC and the Land Use Committee, right? Because they're, they're committees at town meeting. So somehow we have to figure out how to work together.
Right.
So, so the goal is to try to get them to work on your timeline, right? And so they can accomplish what their charge is.
Yep.
I just said.
Yep, make it out there. Well, thank you, Attorney Mead.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming out tonight. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, legal notices, non approvals? Nope? Administrative matters?
Nope.
Nope? Matters of appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7A and 7B together for discussion purposes. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 700. Let's see, 7A is a public hearing and application for approval of a special permit pursuant pursuant to four point two point two point twenty eight point one. Fitness centers of the zoning bylaws, two forty mil six turnpike, core development management is the applicant. And seven B is a discussion for a request for approval of minor engineering change, two forty mil six turnpike, core development and management is the applicant.
Thank you again for having us here. You know, I don't know if you want me to go through sort of the overall.
Just to introduce yourself again.
Sorry, Steve Venezia from Core Development and Management. You know, you're aware that we're here to try to relocate the Planet Fitness located on forty Ray Ave. I won't go through the whole spiel again. I know you've heard it probably about fifty times at this point. But we did have good conversation both last meeting and in between the meetings, from what I understand. And you think we're in a good place to proceed based on the feedback we received in the previous meeting.
Okay. Staff, if you wouldn't mind.
So we, we had a meeting with Steve and the property owners' representatives, Phil, he's with us on Webex, I'm glad he was able to make it. I also, just from a staff perspective, there was a resident who came to our last meeting who brought up some really good points and topics. And I said that I was going to go to the Staff Traffic Advisory Committee, which is police department, fire department, engineering department, and the planning board to kind of review, to try to just kind of review any changes to streets, signs, all that sort of thing. And so I did bring up a lot of topics to them. I asked them about the mid block, there was a discussion about that mid block crosswalk that had been brought up. So that mid block crosswalk is a vestige of Burlington's past. So the, the town engineer is of the belief that mid block crosswalks do not actually keep people safe, they provide a false sense of security for a pedestrian because cars don't actually see them, it's an unexpected thing, and people kind of fly through them. And so, you know, the idea is that when that middle six turnpike extension is repaved, they won't be putting that mid block crosswalk back. And it's also not compliant with the, with the traffic code, so the MUTCD. I don't remember all of the words in the acronym, but it is what the Federal Highway Administration puts out for the standards by which cities and towns are supposed to be putting things on their roadways. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that the, the, the butter wanted to talk about the traffic signal on, on middle six turnpike extension in Bedford Street. And I got updated information. So the camera was updated within the last five years. And it's on a system that adapts to the queues on each of the, on each of the parts of the street where people have stopped. There had been talks that cars backed up and she's unable to get out of her driveway because people, there's only one lane and people are trying to make a left turn onto middle six turnpike extension. There isn't enough right of way to make a dedicated left lane there. It's kind of tight. It's also a state road, it's Route sixty-two. So they did upgrade that signal recently and so they, they, you know, have done all that review, so I think they feel comfortable not really touching that.
Can you point out where you're speaking of?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
Got to see that this, we can zoom in a little bit, because I know it's kind of hard to see on the screen. The outline in green here, this is the property itself, where the proposed Planet Fitness is going to be. And then this street here is middle six turnpike extension, and then Bedford Street, which is sixty-two, which is, in this light here, you can see a little of the light logo here with the, in that there's, I think the queuing was going up this way on Bedford Street, kind of as you go in towards Burlington further into the right.
Yeah.
If that helps.
Where is it that they can't turn left? I'm confused.
So if you are making, on Bedford Street, if you're on sixty-two and you're making a left to go to the Dunkin' Donuts in this plaza, because we're going to, you know, we're patronizing this plaza, you are going to be making a left turn, you're going to be, there's only one lane and you need to, and you're trying to make a left turn, and so all the traffic behind you is trying to go straight, backs up.
So that's accumulating, so what they do instead of going straight, and thank you, staff, we'll get back to you. Instead of going straight to middle six turnpike, what they do is they do the cutoff, right, up to middle six turnpike extension. So everybody's trying to take, take left there, you know, as they, as they're coming down from the north and heading over that way, so.
I got to tell you, the chair, there's been plenty of times where that left-hand turn is difficult, and I just go straight and then go left around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take a left, like, move, so.
Yep, yep.
Yep. So definitely.
Way quicker.
Yep, and so one thing that we did want to talk about because the Bia Butter did bring up that she was concerned that there wasn't enough pedestrian connection through, through the site. And I think that we spoke with the property owner's representative and Steve, and we kind of, we've come up with a pretty good solution that I'm going to let you guys talk about.
Yeah.
But that's kind of, my update, we do have a decision ready for action on this. Two decisions, a special permit for the fitness center that's over twenty, that's twenty thousand square feet. And then also a minor engineering change to kind of codify all of the different changes that have happened on the site plan for many years.
Yep, okay, thank you, staff. Okay, board members, I'll start on to the left with Toni Ann. If you have any comments, Toni Ann?
Not really. I heard his presentation last time, I thought it was a really good move putting it there. I think the change will be good for that, like, it's the same thing, I always would go straight at that, I found it faster, so I support that idea.
Excellent. Member Pemba.
I only have from, from the discussion last time, I don't think it's really going to be much of an issue, to be honest with you. I don't think it's going to create that much more traffic. But I, I really have to reserve the comments for, because you said you came up with some, came up with a.
Yeah, so we had a discussion with, yeah, so.
So I'd like to hear that before I make.
Good, staff.
Yep. So I, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to allow the proponent, the applicant, to kind of discuss what that plan is going to be and kind of what was discussed with the property ownership group.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hoey is on the screen as well. Obviously, as, you know, a tenant, I don't control this, Mr. Hoey does as the representative of the owner. But I can say he was on the phone with us and agreed to what we're talking about here. So right where Caleb's cursor is, we're talking about doing a cut across. That tree would be pruned, of course, so that they can, pedestrian traffic can go directly into that parking lot to avoid having to walk along the green or the snow or anything like that, so that they can actually get access into the parking lot. And Mr. Hoey agreed to that.
So Mr. Hoey is the owner of the, where the bank is located?
He's the owner of our property, he's the owner, and correct me, Phil, if I'm wrong, but he's the owner, representative of a limited partnership on the bank property. So it's, it is technically two different ownership groups. But, you know, he was, he was able to agree to that, given the minor nature. If it were a larger, you know, project or anything like that, he'd have to go to his partners.
Caleb, can I share?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pemba. Ms. Sutherland.
No, I mean, I agree with all the comments with, I think, as much as it would be nice to have a protected left turn, I'm not overly concerned about it. And I think adding pedestrian access will be great. My only question is, during the winter months, will it be easy enough to maintain or manage the ice so that it's still a safe pedestrian way?
If you don't mind, I can share the site plan that we have just uploaded to the meeting point, it might help the conversation.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's Sean Andriano, our architect. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Sean's last name?
Andriano.
Okay.
So here you can see the crosswalk, kind of just what we were showing on the Google Street View just a moment ago, goes from a crosswalk and extends over to the existing sidewalk at Citizens, which has an ADA ramp. And so we're providing access from the roadway to both this property and this property.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Member Larue.
I don't have a lot of questions, I just want to make sure. We had discussed at the last meeting, I had requested some long rectangular planters in front of the building to soften the facade, I want to make sure that's in the decision. Other than that, I have no questions, except when do you expect to open, if you get your approval tonight?
Yeah, we're looking at as soon as possible. Bauer just has to obviously do their part. I suspect it would, we call it Q4, that's where we operate in all quarters. So hopefully before year end is our hope. January is our Super Bowl, so.
Yeah, right.
Great, thank you.
Just one selfish question on my part, do you continue to maintain, will you continue to maintain the existing locations while you're working on the new location?
Absolutely.
And I.
So.
I.
Yeah, without getting into too much detail, we're in negotiations there now because of the timing of just decisions and whatnot. There are lease expirations and things like that that we need to work out, but yes, that's the intent.
Do you have any intel on what they're doing with the space? What's the lead?
I do not.
Chair. Got to ask. The public wants to know.
Member Cavino.
Offset, Mr..
Okay, Member Pemba.
So I can't remember what, remind me what the discussion was about the, about the landscape or trees on the outside perimeter of the property.
Yeah, we were going to talk about working with you folks on doing as much as we can while keeping in mind, obviously I don't control that, Mr. Hoey controls that, keeping in mind egress and ingress and, you know, visibility of the signs, because there is no pylon signage available here. But we are definitely going to be focused on trying to, and the one caveat was the ADA accessibility on the sidewalks and things like that. So we're going to be looking at those planters that you talked about a little bit earlier, I think Chairman Gaffey, you talked about it, as far as the protection and looking at those to try to spruce up the, you know, the facade a little bit, the.
I'm actually thinking on, along the streetscape.
Sure.
Along the extension, middle six extension, so trees, you know, large ornamental grasses, what?
Yeah, we can certainly talk about that, like I said, with, that's up to Mr. Hoey ultimately, we don't control that. We would certainly work with him and you on that. Again, the biggest issue there is whether, you know, ornamental grasses seems like a great idea, that type of thing, because it would have to be just lower profile, I think is, is the only issue that we face, just from a safety perspective and from a visibility perspective.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pemba.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Something, just based on what Mr. Pemba said, I think it's a great idea, it's definitely something we can condition that, you know, between the chairman and the planning director, we can make sure that, you know, a planning plan is decided and it can be conditioned as part of the release of the minor engineering change.
Great.
One other quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Pemba.
Lighting in the parking lot. What, I don't think we addressed lighting in the parking lot. It's now going to be an issue because you guys have closed, you open till like ten at night or something, right?
That's correct.
You know, lighting the parking lot, lighting along the streetscape, you know, maybe any, some kind of, you know, lantern lighting along the streetscape and maybe address what the lighting is going to be.
I can't address that. Mr. Hoey would have to address that. I believe the lighting is currently, you know, available because, keep in mind, right, for all of the businesses that are there, when, during December through March, they're all open and operating in the dark.
Yeah, I, it's just, you know, again, I don't think it's going to be much, because I, I know the way that works and the way the, you know, your patrons, you know, kind of, you know, there's not a lot of people flooding in all at one time.
That's right.
Even all at one time, and it's not really an issue with that. But it is going to be open a lot later. You know, ten o'clock, I don't think there's anything in that plaza that's open till ten o'clock, you know. So lighting is kind of a double-edged sword on that one because there are residences around there as well. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, create some lighting and that it's going to, that's going to be directed away from the residences and yet give enough lighting for people to feel safe coming out to their cars at nighttime when they're leaving the, you know, the facility.
Yeah, we always address lighting when it's an issue from our member safety perspective. I don't personally believe there's an issue at this particular plaza. There are multiple lighting, light poles in this particular parking lot, I believe. Phil, have you had any issue there?
I'm sorry, the audio is reverbing to a great extent, so it's very difficult to hear.
It was just a question of the lighting. Have you had any issues with the lighting in the parking lot?
Well, we have had no issues with it, we've had no complaints. We redid the parking lot to about ten years ago, replaced all the light poles.
We don't have any kind of lighting, like, no, I'm not.
No lighting, I don't think they changed it.
Here, what I see.
You know, we now have a walkway that's going through there, you know, and that walkway should be lit as well. I'm not sure if we have a, you know, again, if we're going to do some streetscape out there, you know, do we do some lanterns and, you know, something to that effect to beautify that area as well? I don't, you know.
We're doing streetscape, why aren't we doing signage? I mean, if we're, I don't, I know, I know, we're not allowed to do.
Not allowed, yep.
But, I mean, maybe give a little nudge to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking that, you know, if we're going to be doing ornamental grasses or whatever it is, maybe we can put some, have you put some, you know, is there a walkway out there, is that?
No, there's no, I don't think there's any walkway.
So people are going to be walking, there's not, no walkway there, they'll be walking across.
Across, right.
Probably walking.
Through the parking lot.
Yeah, they'll be walking through, so I'm just wondering if there's a way to get some, any kind of, you know, lanterns, you know, along the strip of grass when we do the, you know, when you incorporate the, whatever it is that you do, the grasses or the trees or whatever it is.
There are multiple streetlights there as well.
Yeah, it is still a little dark, even though there are streetlights, it is dark in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'd love to see more lighting.
Again, it's not something I could speak to and, and I, you know, you can feel free to ask Mr. Hoey.
Just a comment, it would be great to add more lighting. I mean, you want to beautify your property, you want to bring people to that area, especially, you know, Planet Fitness, they're open till what, ten? If you're going to be open later.
Yeah.
Kind of a different animal when you're not next to the Ice Palace. So Ice Palace is pretty frequented as opposed to this area where it's not going to be, it's going to be more of a destination.
Yeah, you got to be careful with the residents across the street, though, so if you spin it, you want to spin it and you just, Daniel drive there.
Yeah.
Keep on going, right there, and residents are right there.
Yeah, that's all, it's, I mean, the other seven little six turnpike is all residential.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm thinking more like we had, you know how we did down in.
Focus.
Down near Lakashas when we, when they did that building.
The Massachusetts.
Yeah, they put some lanterns along the streetscape.
Yeah.
Which are low-key, it gives you a little bit of light, but it's not overwhelmingly, you know, going to keep anybody awake at night.
Yeah.
In a budding property, so.
And that's only till ten, though, too, because they're only, they're only open till ten unless you anticipate.
No, that's, we're just keeping the same, anticipating, I'm keeping the same hours.
I mean, I know what time Dunkin's closing over there, I think.
Yeah.
Early.
Well, that's, I mean, I think it's early, I don't think it's late. So I'm, again, I'm, maybe not address it with you, but maybe with the owner, or if that's, you know, maybe we can talk to them, see if we can get something solidified.
So you're saying, when you're putting in the landscaping, maybe some, some ornamental lighting?
Put some streetscape in there, you know, with some ornamental lighting and, and, you know, whatever vegetation they're going to use, whether it's trees or whether it's going to be some grasses or some, you know, some ornamental grasses or whatever it is to incorporate.
But I think to your point where the connection is, the, where that new sidewalk's going to be up near the bank, should, there should be some lighting there if there's not already, there might be a light there.
There is a streetlight there. May I, Mr. Chairman, may I ask?
Of course.
Member Pemba, are you, are you, when you're asking for a lighting in that strip, are you intending lighting that will illuminate the parking lot or are you just looking for are you intending lighting that will illuminate the parking lot or are you just looking for something that's sort of beautifying that area?
I think for both, and I think, but I think we're now going to, you know, we've got, going to create, as much as I don't think it's going to be an overwhelming amount of vehicles and whatnot going, I think we're going to create a little more of a buzz down there for the neighbors, so I think we need to, you know, be aware that we should be doing something to beautify for the neighbors as well. They're going to get a plus out of it, you know, something other than just additional car traffic and noise and stuff coming out of it.
Sure, I mean, that property hasn't been beautified since Star Market.
Right, so maybe it's part of the landscaping plan that we'll talk about, you know, is part of the condition, maybe some, some lighting that necessarily is directed at the residents, but maybe colonial-looking lighting that's going to enhance that.
Some atmosphere, some aesthetic and atmospheric.
I think that's, Mr. Hawley, would you, would be entertaining that?
Are you speaking to me?
Yes.
And if I could pick up, and as I mentioned, it's very difficult to hear, you're just looking for some ornamental lights?
Yes, some ornamental lighting along that strip, that's correct.
That basically serve no function other than being ornamental?
That's, you illuminate the backside of that parking lot a bit.
Yeah, it's going to illuminate a part that's really not illuminated. It's going to define where that is now that you're bringing more traffic down in that area, you know, so that they can, you're going to define now where that swale or green area is, so, you know, as the cars going through, they're going to be able to define the road versus, you know, over there. I think, again, you know, it's been years since there's been a lot of traffic down there, and I think we're going to create, we're going to create more traffic and more use, usage down there, so I think, and I think, you know, as Brenda said, really has not been any money put in that in years and years and years, so I think it's very little given, give back to the community.
Yeah, I mean, 1999, I think, is the last time I saw like a real upkeep of that property, and, please don't take that disrespectfully, but I think that, you know, you want to attract tenants, you want to make this a destination, and there is opportunity for you to continue to prosper from beautifying the property, and while it's not a requirement, it is, we can't tell you what to do. It's a respectful request that, that you would continue to approve the property, not only for the neighbors and the tenants, but for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone. So this is a public hearing? Any members of the public wish to speak? Anybody up there? Caleb or in the hall?
I don't see anyone online raising their hand, so I'm going to say no.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of core development and management for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.2.28.1, fitness centers of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws, to permit the operation of a fitness facility to be known as Planet Fitness for property located in the Central Business District at 240 Middlesex Turnpike Extension. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
For discussion?
Yeah, true.
So you just end it, you just have to end?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I guess I'm, we discussed a little bit, but we haven't really gotten any resolution.
We can't, we can't.
Well, we can certainly say we need lighting to define, you know, I mean, there's things we can't do to, in other words.
I thought the chair was going to work on that with staff.
Well, they said that about the, about the, whatever vegetation was going to, we don't want to run light.
So, I mean, I mean, we, we can ask, we don't have design review for this property. You guys definitely have design review over the town center, so I just want to make that.
But we have safety review. We have all of the things that go along with, you know, increased traffic and increased usage of a, of a site plan, so.
So let's, let me figure out, let me go back. So we had a public hearing, we said no, we, do we vote on the public hearing?
We didn't.
No, we didn't.
Let's do that first.
So.
So that motion is going to auto.
Right.
So has the, so before we do that, Mr. Chair, has the property owner agree, like, what are we agreeing to?
That's what I'm wondering.
For the owner? What am I going to write in the decision? I could, I can definitely, we can definitely ask for landscaping and stuff, but I think, and lighting, but I...
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion?
Please.
I would suggest that the motion would read that the chair and planning staff would meet with the property owner to come up with a landscaping plan that includes lighting that would illuminate the parking lot but not disturb the neighbors across the street, and if the property owner is amenable to that, he can tell us right now and staff can write it that way.
So, Mr. Hawley, we're saying we'd work offline on, on the landscaping and lighting plan with you.
I'm sorry, I can't pick up anything you guys are saying.
Okay. Is there a way that you can text him what we're saying?
I don't, I don't have his cell, but can you hear any better when I speak into the mic like this?
Yeah, we just not.
It's a little clearer, yes.
So they were asking if you would be amenable to working with the chair offline to finalize the lighting and vegetation plan for that strip in front of the plaza?
Regarding that strip, we had at one time put ornamental bushes across the entire, the entire thing. I would constantly get calls from the safety officer at the Burlington Police Department requesting that I mow it down because of the difficulty in pulling out, looking to your left as you're coming out on Middlesex Turnpike?
Yeah, we would incorporate that in the plan of where you'd be off a certain amount from that exit or entrance, so, yeah, if it was too close, we would, we'd incorporate that in our review together.
Did you hear that, Phil?
I did not get it.
Sorry. They said they would incorporate that very feedback into the plan and that they would take that into consideration so that there were either lower grasses or a lower profile of the bushes or a fair distance away from the egress to avoid any safety concerns.
Correct, that's, that's, that's no problem.
Okay. And did the additional lighting on that, we're talking about lighting the, the edge of that parking lot would be in part of that as well, we can work together on that?
Mr. Chair, if I may, is that low voltage lighting like you're talking about, basically? Is, is that what I'm understanding? So low voltage is sort of the ornamental landscape lighting?
Yeah, like street lamps.
Yeah.
You know, just street lamps.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be.
Versus high, you know, just.
It's going to be low.
Like, if you went into the center of town and you saw the streetscape, that type of a lamp.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you understand that? I see, I don't know what the electricity is out there or anything like that.
I wouldn't have any idea offhand.
Okay, well, we can, we can work.
Yeah, the only thing I would bring up there is, from an electricity perspective, if you're talking about bringing electrical out there, if it's out there and it's accessible, if not, you're talking about a major cost from a trenching perspective, you're talking about cutting up the parking lot if you're trying to bring it from a place that's connected to the center, going out there, and, I mean, I don't want to speak for Phil, but that's going to be a prohibitive cost.
Yeah, there might be other ways to skin the cat, like solar, right?
Yeah.
A low voltage solar to just kind of show where that delineation is on that parking lot.
Yeah, so a low voltage solar discussion, something like that, Phil, that would not require trenching to the island.
Well, depending on what the electrical situation required.
I'd be very open to discussion, absolutely.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you.
Staff, we go with that, then?
I feel, thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel more comfortable being able to draft a decision and make sure it's all set.
Perfect. No, thanks, everyone, for clarification.
Well, now, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Public hearing, thank you, guys.
Second.
With me and the new chair. If we have all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's 700. Now, you have another motion, please.
And then do I just read this motion again?
Please.
Pretend I never did.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of core development
and management for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.2.28.1, fitness centers of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws, to permit the operation of a fitness facility to be known as Planet Fitness for property located in the Central Business District at 240 Middlesex Turnpike Extension. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
700.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 240 Middlesex Turnpike Extension to codify the current site layout as reflected on the site plan entitled, Proposed Planet Fitness 240 Middlesex Turnpike Burlington, Middlesex County, Mass., prepared by BL Companies, dated February 10, 2024, and revised to March 8, 2024, subject to the following provisions, terms, and conditions as amended. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
700. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just say, thank you all. Obviously, this has been a very long process. I think we're coming in on a year. I just want to thank you all very much for that, and especially Liz and Caleb. You have an amazing staff. I do this in a lot of municipalities, and you're very lucky to have them. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the town's very excited to have you move the facility, which is very popular within the town. We've heard a lot of feedback, I know, from residents that are members as well, to heading over to Middlesex Turnpike. I think you're going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item C is a continued discussion, request for approval of minor engineering change, 101 Middlesex Turnpike. Brixmore Property Group is the applicant. We're talking about the parking lot drainage improvements there. Staff?
Sure. So this has been a long time, so it's, it's really great that it's kind of coming, coming together. So we have, they propose, again, they proposed increasing the flood storage mitigation and doing some changes to the parking lot. I think there have been some updates since the last meeting. Was there, did you guys talk about the four? I don't remember if they talked about the four spaces, but at this point, we have, we have confirmation from CONCOM and Board of Health, and, you know, so I think that we are comfortable with moving forward on just this. So they don't have, so Board of Health, please have me update. Board of Health has, has provided comments that are in the decision. Conservation has also provided comments that are cited within the decision, and they're all kind of standard things, and they, you know, through their processes that, with the other town departments. So with that, that's kind of all we have.
Okay. Over to the applicants, please.
Just for the record, attorney Mark Vaughn, representing the applicant, Brixmore. I think you met our team at the prior meeting, but Mark Newman, who's with Brixmore, Vice President of Development, Mike Cornoni, architect, and also Carolyn Armstrong, civil engineer with Kim Lee Horn. But I think Liz did a great job of kind of summarizing where we were. This is the portion of the site that has had some historic flooding going on, so we are looking to remedy that situation by raising the parking lot and doing some compensatory flood storage work in that area to be able to address the fact that we're raising that parking lot within a flood plain. So as Liz made reference to, one of the issues that we had to work on the, with the Conservation Commission on was they wanted to see 100% compensatory flood storage provided. Originally, we were looking to do 95%, hoping that that might be enough, but the Commission requested that we do full 100% compensatory flood storage, which was shown on the revised plan or is shown on the revised plan. That resulted in kind of a couple of notches being taken out where there's some parking there. It was a net loss of four spaces, so not a significant loss, but, you know, you know, one that we are comfortable with and pursuing. So it was approved by the Conservation Commission at their meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the Board of Health, as Liz mentioned, approved it as well with conditions.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Vaughn. I will go to the board members. I'll start with Ms. LaRue.
I don't have any questions on this matter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Rappaport?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cavino?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sutherland?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Pemba?
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Natola?
I'm fine, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other comments as well. Thanks, staff, for working with the applicant on that.
So through you, Mr. Chair, just a quick update. So this is kind of minor engineering change, part one, just to handle the flood mitigation. At our next meeting, we will be seeing the same group because we're going to be discussing the facade improvements and circulation improvements on the site, as well as hearing Tate come in. What we are waiting on right now is we're still receiving more information about their traffic memo and traffic counts and how, how that all works. It's always tough when you have these multi-tenant properties, kind of fit everything in, so that's what we're waiting for. So that's just kind of preview to next meeting.
Okay, so this is just the first step of the parking lot drainage on the, the minor engineering change?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change application of Brixmore Property Group for property located at 101 Middlesex Turnpike. To permit the parking lot modifications consisting of the removal of four parking spaces, replace existing drainage structures to increase underground detention capacity, regrading and reconstruction of the affected parking lot, and the creation of compensatory flood storage capacity required by Massachusetts DEP as reflected on a plan entitled Flood Mitigation Plans for Burlington Square Shopping Plaza 101 Middlesex Turnpike Burlington, Mass. 01803, prepared by Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated, dated April 2, 2024, revised to May 9, 2024, consisting of six sheets, subject to the following provisions, terms, and conditions as printed. Second?
I'm just going to have a request. As I read down the, if I'm looking at the right thing here, maybe I'm not looking at the right thing.
Oh, yeah, that information in here is referencing Terry Ave.
Referenced Terry Ave, so we want to make sure that it's corrected on the conditions.
I thought I went through this.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
Phil, well, we can just say as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
I remember.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
700, thank you. All right, so now, we're over to...
Mr. Chair, I missed, did, through you, I did misspeak. We are going to have a quick discussion about the facade improvements, but Tate is not going to be part of that discussion.
Okay, so, quick discussion for, this is 70, a continued discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change, 101 Middlesex Turnpike, Brixmore Property Group applicant. This is about the facade and circulation improvements. Okay, staff, do you want to kind of introduce this one again?
So it's kind of what I said earlier, we're still waiting on a revised parking memo, just, you know, to make sure it complies with our bylaw and to make sure that, you know, it's really, we make sure that the mix is going to work because this is a prime site in town. There's so much potential here. It's a tough site. We all, you know, there's a lot going on here, especially with the amount of water that is around the area, so we just want to make sure that it's all going to work. But I do believe that they should have that memo in before our next meeting, so I'll make sure that that gets out to everybody for review. But with that, I mean, from our staff's perspective, the facade improvements are, you know, we're very much in support of them, and I've talked to Melissa Chantaklis, and she's also very much in support of the improvements that are being proposed here.
Okay. Any additional comments from the applicant on that?
I'll let Mark maybe just do, you know, one thing I did want to maybe weave into the discussion and kind of apropos of what the residents spoke of earlier. I know one of the comments that the board had at the last meeting was wanting to make sure that we had those sturdy planter ballards around the patio that would be where Tate is.
Thank you.
So I know that we'll talk about that and just, you know, I hope what this makes manifest is it's a significant investment in this property in terms of upgrading its overall appearance, but.
Yeah, I'll just do a quick recap from last time. I'm Mark Newman with Brixmore Property Group. Last time you heard my voice and maybe saw my face. Nice to meet you, person. In person. Very nice to meet you. So if you want to start from the top, and this is just a refresher for anybody that didn't hear last time, essentially, this is a backfill exercise for us. It's, we've got a vacancy right, if you see the middle building, our property is everything in yellow, and it's Burlington Square. The middle building has a 12,000 square foot vacancy. It's been vacant for four years. Really excited to be bringing a couple of new restaurants to that 12,000 square feet. We're splitting it up into four spaces. Two of the spaces, the restaurant uses, one of them is Tate, the other is, I'm not allowed to say who it is yet, but we have a signed lease, and they will be appearing before you soon for a special use permit. Tate's, and the other restaurant, I think that triggers a need for a parking reduction, which is one of the requests that we have. The next time that we're before you, we should have our parking analysis, which was completed, updated with some, some, fine tuning it a bit to address the bylaw that you recently passed and make sure that the, you know, that the analysis matches up with what your bylaw is seeking to do. And, and just to walk you through the project real quickly, if you could just go down to the next screen, it's, it's really, it's, it's splitting up the space into those four spaces, and it's also doing everything around, you see the sort of the red dotted line, that's all going to be facade renovation, and we're doing all new landscaping. Last time we were here, we were, last time, you know, two weeks ago, we did not have the landscaping plan as part of this presentation. This time, we included it, so we're happy to walk you through it. If you want to jump to the next screen.
Was that, was that one tenant before, and if so, who was it?
It was Payara Salon was the name of the tenant. They were 12,000 square feet, and now it's going to be, we're breaking it up into four spaces, and, you know, I probably didn't explain it well enough. We're also adding a sidewalk in front. There's no sidewalk there now. There's going to be a sidewalk that runs from the patio where Tate is down to the patio where tenant, whose name we won't mention, is, but you can see it on the plan. And we're adding new patios, and we're adding landscaping and a screening wall along the front, and I'm going to show it all to you and explain why.
Okay, hold on. Remember, Rappaport, you had a question?
This is a complete retrofit. This is nothing.
Yeah, there's no, no additional square footage.
Yeah. It's a, there's a slight modification to the entrance going in that was necessary to create the area for that sidewalk.
Can you point out what that slight modification is?
Yeah.
Without a traffic study, I mean.
Yeah, if you can close it, if you can get really close to the entrance right there. We're modifying the driveway coming in. The specifics are, we're taking the width right at Middlesex Turnpike. It's getting reduced from 28 feet wide to 25 feet wide. The 24-foot width base for the remainder of the driveway is remaining the same, so we're really only making a modification to that point when cars are coming right in. Traffic will still be two-way right there. It's still a right in and right out at Middlesex Turnpike. There's no change to the parking lot in front of Golf Galaxy on that side. We are adding a bunch of safety features. We're adding additional stop signs. We're adding another crosswalk, so there will be two crosswalks connecting the side of the property where you have, where you had Payara Salon with the side of the property where you have Golf Galaxy. Right now, there's one nice crosswalk. We're going to do another one. If you pull back a little bit, I could show you where the second one is.
I assume that the island that you're modifying isn't going to impede medical or prior emergency vehicles being able to get in?
It will be absolutely to code.
Yes.
And Middlesex Turnpike has a, an island there? Is there?
There's an island there today, yes, at that entrance.
So it's, it's an absolute half to right-in, right-out?
There's no way to take a left. There's a median.
When do you expect to get your traffic study?
Well, the track, the parking study is done. We're just, we're modifying it, and we're adding a little bit of analysis to it. We took some additional parking counts. The parking counts that we had were from December of 2023, December 1, which is like a very busy Saturday right before the holidays. And we also took some daytime counts during the weekday this past week, and that's what we're adding to it so that you have a full, full picture of the underutilization of the parking lot.
Right. But you're, you're taking those parking counts into consideration, the tendency that you're implementing into this facility?
Yeah. We're also relying on the ITEP rates for the, we're doing predictive modeling for the uses that are coming in. The report will be soup to nuts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll also hear from Tate, who will be here, who will speak to their usage, you know, and the number of people that are coming to the property.
Any other members right now?
We don't even get a rhymes with with the other one?
Nope.
I mean, just look at the plan.
Okay.
Please continue.
I was going to...
Yeah. So some of the other, and one of the things that you asked us for last time was to add four parking spaces to the lot for pickup, to add parking spaces for pickup. We've added those. These are on the plan now.
Can you show where they are on the plan?
Sheet without the on...
Yeah. It would be on that. I believe it is, and it's on the right side. It's across the street.
Oh, across the street.
It's across the driveway.
Yeah.
Not on this.
Do you see a little note in there? Existing. It should be proposed. Might not be on that one?
It might be on the... Would it be in this presentation or would it be on the whole site?
So I'm going to, I'm going to stop, I think, right here because I think it's an important point. So if you, with your restaurant to be named later, that's going to be, that restaurant, historically, that we're familiar with locally, there's a lot of pickup there, right?
Yes.
In and out of pickup. And so what you, what you have is, and this is a bit of local flavor that you might not be familiar with, coming up Middlesex Turnpike and taking that right, which now you've narrowed just a bit, people come down there, if there's a green light, they're coming in there fairly quickly and turning into this, into the plaza fairly quickly.
Yeah.
So if you, if you're opposing to have your pickup spots just to the right of that and then have people come right at the thing, I think that's not the safest play there.
So let me address that real quickly. It was at the request of that retailer, whose name we can't mention, that those spots be where they're located. We suggested that they be pushed back a little bit. There will be a crosswalk. People will be, if you can pull out, I think it shows the two crosswalks on this plan, should. There will be a crosswalk for people parking in that area to get over pretty quickly to the restaurants, but there will be the person who decides to run across. And there are going to be cars that are coming in too fast. So if you tell us you want us to relocate those, we'll do it.
So what I was thinking is maybe even something a little different. If you, we relocate the restaurant not to be named to move that to the front somehow?
So flip Tate with the other restaurant, you mean?
Yeah, something like that. And then have the pickup spots around the corner so they don't have to cross the main thoroughfare there. Go ahead.
If I may, I think it might be easier to just move the pickup spots.
To where, though?
To move them up further to where, like basically where Tate will be, even though the pickup spots would be for to be named. I would move them further up.
Further up on the... I agree. So on the same side, just further up.
Yeah. So they're not right where cars are pulling in, not paying attention.
Yeah. We, we wanted to present on behalf of our retailer the location that they preferred.
Yeah.
But take into consideration your thoughts and your, the local...
You can let us be the bad guys on that.
The local color. I would agree that it makes sense to move those, so we're fine with it.
It's not good business to have your pickup customers get mowed down by a pickup truck.
I'd agree.
Yeah.
It's not good business for owning a shopping center either.
Yeah. Yeah. Good. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Sutherland.
Sorry. One other question. Where would the handicap spots be located? And let me give you more context behind that question because another place, I guess I can say the name, Sweetgreen. I mean, I frequent that a lot, and there's a lot of issues of people who are trying to get in and out, they pull into a handicap spot because there's no other spots, and that's always open. And so I would love for it to not be, I mean, obviously, it needs to be compliant, but like, how can we, how can we find a way where, like, people aren't using it inappropriately?
Well, I think, Carolyn, you might be able to speak to where they're located on this plan. We really have them around the corner.
Okay.
I believe. They're, in my opinion, a little clustered and, you know, but they're, they're all sort of near each other in the center point of that building right there.
Okay.
And they're, they're, they're throughout the site. They're located throughout the site per ADA code.
Yeah. Okay.
This is, yeah, I don't know if you can kind of tell here that this is where, where Ta, the proposed Tate is. And kind of, what is that? That's about eight or so spaces. Then there's the 488 accessible that are here, that those are the closest I see.
Okay.
As far as to that, to that main part of the building.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Any other members about just those topics? Okay.
Want to flip to the next?
Yeah. Let me get back to that PDF now.
Thanks. Thank you. Pilot here.
Yeah. Here we go. Okay. I will get to the next. But I don't know what this is. Let me, it's all zoomed out weird.
So this is the landscape plan, and it's really two parts. So we included everything. So we wanted to show you what we were doing. All that green that you see that makes sort of the U, the wide U that's on top of the site, that's all the landscaping that we're doing. That is all the compensatory storage area. The parking lot that you see to the right of it, that rectangle parking lot right there, that's the parking lot that we're lifting up about a foot and a half to solve the flood problem. To compensate for that foot and a half of volume that we're taking up in the floodplain, we have to do about some digging and some contouring in the little bit of land that we have between the detention ponds and the parking lot. In that, in that contoured area, we're doing a lot of landscaping, something like 80 plants, I believe, 80 and eight trees that we're replacing. So that's going to be heavily landscaped, which I think is going to be wonderful. It'll keep it from eroding, A. B, I think it's going to serve, it's going to blend very nicely with the nature that's there today. And, you know, the, I was there this morning, the flooded parking lot is become a nice little bird sanctuary, if you've noticed. But we think that this will be a nice replacement for the flooded parking lot. We're also doing landscaping along that new sidewalk that we're creating right there along the driveway coming in.
A second just to zoom in.
Yep.
And you can see the details as well.
Yeah. And if you reviewed the plan that we circulated before, you're probably, you know, I don't know if you spent the time to look at the various species, but it's, it's a professionally rendered landscape plan. It's going to look great. We're also doing landscaping along the front building. So the built, so if you know from driving how horrible looking that building is, so what we're doing is we're going to put up the building, you can't move the equipment that's there onto the roof, the, all the, all those HVAC units and, and condensers and whatnot. It's, we can't move it up to the roof of the building because the structural integrity of the building, the soils that the building was built on, can't handle a lot of weight. So what we're doing instead is we're going to be putting up a screening wall in front of it that's sort of like a cosmetic feature. It's also, we think, going to be, it's going to be landscaped as well in front of that. So the rest of the plan shows the landscaping that's going to be in front of the screening wall. And if you go to the next slide...
Yep. And I can do that. My computer. This one?
Yeah, you can probably go to the next one. You can go to the next one.
Next one?
I didn't even know all that detail was in there, but that's, that's nice.
This is what, this exists right now.
Right. So I just wanted to show you, this is what it looks like today, and if you continue down, you could just keep moving down. That's the center today. This is what the proposed facade renovation is going to look like. So that building on the left, that's going to be the corner where the tenant, whose name we can't say, is going to be. And that's the landscaping that's going to be by their patio. That's Tate. Tate is going to be in that corner position coming in driveway. If you go down one more, you'll see it from a different angle. So that's how it's going to look. It matches up with Tate's look at some of the other properties that we really liked that we got inspiration from and ended up picking our wonderful architects because they worked on the Tate in Wellesley. And just thought that one looked fantastic.
And I just want to just add as well that as the discussion was about the protection around the spaces that these, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that these kind of planter beds here will kind of double up as, as protection as ballards.
That's exactly right. They're bollards slash planters. We were, we were asked to debollardize them and make them more like plant.
Is that clone still there? Or am I envisioning that from like Tower Records back in?
This is still...
That's still there? Still there?
That's there, yeah.
Still there, and it can't come down. It's structural. It would mess up the building and be a huge cost.
But they're not going to put a sign on it?
No signage.
No sign on that one?
Not on that one.
No on that one, but the other one?
Right. That was Tate's call. We gave them that option. What we're not turning, what we're not going to do is turn it into a sign, a sign band with different tenants' names on it.
Former CBA member, and I'm just kind of thinking about the structure that's on Middlesex Turnpike is being revamped, and there's that big column that they requested, and now they were asking for signage and whatnot. So I just kind of just wanted to ensure that we're not...
It's...
For that clone.
On the other side, we are, but there's signage there today, so we're really just replacing signage for signage, and you'll see it's going to be tasteful.
Thank you.
This is what the screen wall is going to look like. It's made up of different materials, which we'll explain to you in a minute. It's going to have landscaping. This is what it's going to look like at nighttime. So one of the comments that came up was that we should maybe go with different colors for the different, you know, tenants and, and have some form of, I forgot the name of the kind of lighting that, that, you know...
Goose neck?
Yeah. And, and, and we considered it, but we felt that, and, and we felt that that, and we're doing a little bit of goose neck lighting in front of Tate, but we felt this stretch and the screening wall and the nature of the wall and the look that we're going for is something a little cleaner and more modern. We were asked, you know, to, last time that we were here, we were asked to, we gave an example, we said that that was an example that we picked up, an inspiration from one of our other shopping centers. We were asked to provide that example, and we sent it. And I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but it's a shopping center of ours called Village at Newtown, and we included some of the proposed signage for that project so that you see where we got the idea from for that sort of marquee lit up, you know, white light, white letter, you know, lighting.
Where is that property?
It's in Pennsylvania, Newtown, Pennsylvania.
Can you send that property to staff?
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah. You guys have it.
All right.
This is the, a little bit more about the screen wall, the materials, and I don't know if you want to know the details of it. You do? I'm going to hand it off to my architect. So I don't want to mess it up.
Okay. So just to get into some detail for this, so this is going to be custom fabricated. It's going to be basically steel posts that go into the ground, and then we're going to have a few different types of materials on this. So we're going to have some composite wood-like, wood look slats that you can see there that he's pointing to. So those will flank what's going to be a mesh screen wall in the middle, and that mesh screen wall is going to have plantings below it. I believe it's a climbing hydrangea is what we're proposing that we'll be able to climb up that wall that you can see in those, in those renderings. And then above this is the lit signage cabinet that you can see that will at night glow, and this is what it will look like during the day where it's just cut out and white
Great. Now, I'm just going to comment on that, if I may. Just what I think I commented on last time is that you would try to avoid having the signage go from one to the other without any, I would call it white space. I don't want to say white space to make it white, but to separation of the signs versus having all those signs, which it looks like you've done. You need, you know, a couple of, you know, inches on either side just to, to be able to differentiate too for your tenants.
Yeah. The intent is not to have like a hodgepodge of signs with different colors and logos and whatnot to make it a much neater, presentable package.
Yeah. I don't think we've mentioned different colors, but...
No, but I, yeah, I know. What's out there today?
Give you some space between the signage is what I'm indicating. Just have it run unsigned because then you, nobody will be able to differentiate anyway. It's just be...
It's like one long sentence.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Then the next slide, real quickly, and just going to try to wrap it up. Just, we could skip through this. This is just some of the elevations. Yeah. This is just an example, actually, of some of the lighting. We're going to add some, what we consider to be some really cool looking lighting features at that gazebo right there. We're going to be adding those. I had a hard time explaining this before. They're sort of light poles, light, what do you?
Linear light fixtures.
There you go. Linear light fixtures. We think it's going to look, we think it's going to be great. We're really excited about the facade renovation.
Would those change colors at all?
No.
Okay, so we have conditions that they stay white.
Yeah.
So, and they don't, they don't change.
They don't blink. You don't want to read it?
No, it's, we're, that's the reason, we're trying to go tasteful.
Yeah.
Fitting with the neighborhood.
And I think fitting of your clients too, I think that's going to welcome as your, as your tenants are going to be looking at that, and that's their theme of earthy and natural and.
Yeah, we really feel like we're taking the center from 1986 to, you know.
Yeah, no.
Taking a good 30 years.
I think everyone here in town has got the buzz on that, and they're very excited about the activation of that center as well, so.
Yeah, and we wanted to make sure tonight that we addressed all the comments that you had last time about the landscaping, the lighting. We wanted to come back and explain the sign and show you the screen wall at night and at daytime so that you got a picture. The only thing we haven't, that we're not going to be able to discuss tonight that we'll have to do next time is to get into the parking reduction that we're going to need for these two restaurants. I would say that if possible, we would request that any other comments or any other thoughts we would love to hear tonight.
Yeah.
So, because the next time, I think my colleague's going to be here instead of me, and just, we want to see if we can get as much done.
We don't want to start all over again.
Yeah, we've been doing this now because of the, because of the parking lot fix. We've been going at this for about six to eight months.
Appreciate that, because it's a tough site, in particular with that. So thank you for that. I'll turn over to the board and see any questions. Why don't I start off with Ms. Sutherland?
So, just looking at this, it looks like you'll have umbrellas in the back. Is that the plan of the unnamed tenant?
I honestly cannot remember if that's part of the plan for them.
Okay.
I think that that's on this rendering as an illustration of how it might look. I cannot remember.
Okay.
I don't have that answer. Candy?
That would be great to confirm.
Yeah.
Understand, okay. And if.
Either way, if you want them or don't want them, we'll, you know, they'll have to comply with code.
Yeah, I think, I mean, because if they're seating out there, I think it would be nice to have some level of shade.
Absolutely.
But understanding what the option will be for shade will be good, and I'm sure, as you know, with, if there are umbrellas, we have a no logo thing on the umbrellas, but.
Yeah.
No logos on the umbrellas.
No signage on the.
Like Corona on the, yeah.
Fair enough.
I'm excited about landscaping. I didn't know there was such a thing as climbing hydrangeas, so now I'm going to have to look at that for my house. I was like, what? So I'm very excited. I don't think I have any other questions other than like, I think moving the parking up away from the entry would be nice, but you have the bollards and all that, so I'm excited.
Okay, Mr. Mempa.
Actually, just a curiosity question. Do you know if these, what these buildings are built on? Are they built on pilings?
Built on structure, they are. They're built on pilings, they're built on structural slabs. We, when we were, we were talking about this earlier today. When we were first looking at what we could do with this building, it was just like stomping upon one bad news after another. First, there was understanding that it was built on soils that were not suitable for normal retail construction.
Yeah.
Then whoever built the building originally wanted to even save more money by having all the HVAC units on the side and not building the building with the kind of structure necessary to hold it.
Yeah.
So it wasn't just the soils, but it was actually the construction of the building. And then there's the fact that it's in the flood plain, which makes it expensive to sort of scrape and rebuild. And then there's the fact that it's next to the wetlands, and, yeah, I think that's enough.
Because I remember back in the 60s, I think it was, there was a, there was a high-rise.
There was.
A redwood building.
Yes.
Built a redwood building that sunk.
Yeah.
That right.
It started breaking apart because it was sinking in there. So they ended up having to take it apart piece by piece.
Yeah.
And I know as a kid, we had a pool in our backyard, and they got some of the redwood panels. Caught a bunch of those redwood panels and made a fence around our pool.
Repurpose those.
Thank you, Mr. Mempa, Ms. Dola.
I just want to say, I think you did a great job. I think it looks really nice.
Thank you. I'm going to swing it over to Mr. Cavino, if you're ready.
There was some discussion about pedestrian access, sidewalks, whatever, is that?
We did, so we've, we've been having ongoing conversations with the municipality, and let me just acknowledge and thank the planning, the planning department and economic development for, we've been working with them on the rezoning. We've been, you know, participating in some of the, some of the earlier sort of focus groups and conversations. We, we think that there's going to be some opportunities down the road on two of the other buildings where there might be a chance for us to do some redevelopment, and we know that we've been recently rezoned, the Staples Building, and one building that's off to the side to possibly in the future be repurposed or mixed use or for residential, if that's the right way for that building to go, which might be a possibility. And we think at that time, there will be an opportunity to do what we think is more like thoughtful pedestrian connectivity. We looked at some options right now, and they just didn't pencil and didn't, we looked at a couple of options at the intersection of Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike. And I don't know if you remember last time we were here, but there's such a significant drop off that you would end up creating, you could, and none of that land is ours too, that's the other thing. That entire drop off all the way to the parking lot is all, is not our land to develop.
It's all municipal?
It's the town of Burlington Land, yeah.
That was.
We've, we've previously had developers concern sidewalks on municipal land, but that's neither here nor there. Go ahead.
Right, no, and we're happy to have those conversations and look at it. We understand the importance of it. Right there, that point right there, as we were looking at last time we were here, is especially troublesome because of the slope and the fact that there's such a drop off. You end up either creating a sidewalk that runs next to the highway, which I don't think people like, I don't think people use. We were thinking that there might be a way to bring the sidewalk down into the property, but then we were thinking that it might make more sense depending on what we end up doing with that middle building. So the facade renovation that we're doing, it's, the building that we were focused on is going to have a substantial facade renovation.
Excuse me for a minute. Do you, so you own the whole building, Sam?
Yeah, I can show you. It's shadow anchored with another property. We own up to the Golf Galaxy.
Not, not the building where Work and Gear and Wendy's is, that's separate.
So Liberty Travel and all that area, because they just left.
Let's go, let's go back to your site.
In the future.
Hold on, let's go back to the site plan so we're clear on what.
Do you want to go to the site plan, or you want me to go?
Uh, go, yeah, this was good here, this is fine.
RJ Kelly owns the next strip down.
Oh, right. That's exactly right.
Where Duluth, where Duluth Trading.
This is not theirs, going left.
Of course, there's a tree in the way. This, this, this building here, where the, where the Duluth is, Duluth Trading and Wendy's is, this, that my mouse is circling, is not a brickmore property.
Okay.
As you move over to, as you move over here into the plaza, now you move where Golf Galaxy is, where the Blaze Pizza is, and now as we've been discussing tonight where the facade enhancements are, this entire spot over here.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess my, my point is, is to bring the sidewalks up, is to just put you on notice that when you do a, something that will produce enough financial gain to make it feasible to, because obviously you can do anything as long as you throw enough money at it, that I at least would be looking for you to come up with a way to do some kind of sidewalks, at least along, maybe along Mall Road, I think is the more difficult part, Middlesex Turnpike, even if it was on municipal property.
Okay, I'll go to Ms. Rapo first, okay?
I, that's mine.
Thank you, Ernie.
I don't really have a lot to say until we have the phantom tenant come to.
I can't wait to hear who it is.
Well, I mean, I think we know who it is, but I would also respectfully, I would also respectfully ask staff if we have a packet, that we have whatever's there in here. I didn't see that, unless I'm blind.
So, was this packet?
This is not in our package.
Is it that, that, this? So this presentation is not, is not in our, in our package? So you want this presentation printed out?
Whatever's being presented up there, for those of us who forgot their glasses because they're old, I'd like it.
You'd like a copy?
Print it.
Sure.
Please.
I mean, you, I think I sent, you guys have a copy you can send, or we can?
Yeah, I can make sure we send it out as well.
I would appreciate that.
Yep.
And furthermore, we talked about no blue lights, no, no, the things you hate, the big. No, the signs.
Those are signs.
Yes, thank you. Like when your new tenants come in, no flag signs.
Oh, that's Barbara, not me.
Oh, the, the guy with the floppy arms?
Yeah, floppy arms, like the big fancy.
We'll, we'll note that anyway.
For you to put that as a condition.
Thank you.
Yes, I just need to say that out loud, because every time we don't, it happens. And even if we do, sometimes.
Just ask that.
So I just, just throwing it out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to make sure it's in the condition that the pickup spots will be the closest spots to the crosswalk, because that's the only way we're going to get people to use the crosswalk.
Yeah.
So let's put the spots right next to the crosswalk. And then just a comment, I think perhaps all of that strange stuff that went on with the building that required the, the air conditioning units, all of that to be outside, in a way, it inspired the creativity to create that wall, which I think is going to look a lot better than it would have if you just put units on the roof.
Yeah.
So I think that was very well done.
Great, thank you.
Glasses half full.
Right. Thank you, members. All right, I'm all set. Thank you, I think you answered all my questions that I had.
Okay.
So thank you.
So.
Is there a motion?
I think we are making a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of June 20th, June 20th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven zero zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, we'll see you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Sorry, won't see you again, but.
Yes.
Go Celtics, all right?
Go Celtics, let's go, we got.
Eight twenty-nine. Come on, let's do it.
I know we get some stuff, but maybe what we can do is kind of rip through.
We do have a lot. Let's do it.
Y'all have DVR, you just.
Here we go, minutes, May 2nd. Has anybody looked at, folks, has anybody looked at May 2nd?
All set.
Yes.
Yes, okay, can I have a motion?
Ma'am, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of May 2nd, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What do we got? Okay, six zero one?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, other matters, we have discussion, extension of time, staff.
So 43 South Ave, this is the parcel that is next to the Keerig site that Gutierrez still owns. It's undeveloped as of right now. I think it's where they're like, they have a basketball court there. It's actually its own parcel.
Yeah.
And Scott Weiss has been here. He first permitted it as a, pre-permitted it as a office building, and then kind of recently, within the last five years, he re-permitted it so that they could market it as a life science building. We previously extended, I think, the life science special permit, but he wants to retain, because it's in a PD, all special permits, he wants to extend the time for the office use too. And so this is essentially doing that, so it's extending the time of the two special permits that are coming before us.
Chair?
Any, yeah, any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Rapo.
If we, do we have to purpose this? Is this an obligation?
No, I mean.
My, my point of view has always been, if it's important to them, they'd show up. Is there anyone here who have the advocate?
So I didn't believe that Scott Weiss needed to show up.
Typically, extension of times.
Extension of time, we usually don't do that. I mean, I think that, you know, based on, the last time he was here, I think, two meetings ago for the, the first special permit, he did come to that one.
Yeah.
And I think he did explain about, you know, market conditions and all that stuff.
The chair, they just don't want to build it out until they have a tenant. And I'm fine with that, but I mean, if somebody could show up virtually and just two seconds out of their time, it's important to you, it's important to me, I don't know.
I think to Liz's point, though, he was here a couple of weeks ago where he did bring, or a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago where he did bring it up.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
Madam, I mean, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the time as requested. Oh, wait, here it is, written out. The planning board here by grants a two-year extension of time from July 18th, 2024 to July 18th, 2026. To complete the required special permit improvements pertaining to the reconfiguration of the previously authorized 590,000 square foot office laboratory research and development campus, specifically the 187,000 plus or minus square foot unbuilt building and associated structured parking and site improvements at 43 South Avenue as requested by the applicant in a letter dated May 29th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, six zero one, thank you. Next, updated application fee schedule based on the use table. This is what we've got in front of us here, highlighted in yellow.
Yes, so as part of the use table modernization that was passed at town meeting, that there's new phrasing in our, in our use table, and as that, that we have a fee schedule that directly aligns with what's in our use table. So now, when the day afterwards, we realized, oh, that means we need to update this so that things match. So what you have in front of you, everything that is highlighted is what has changed, that it, so none of the amounts that is going, that we charge on our fees has changed. This is just to match what, either the new section number or the new phrasing in the use table is. So there's nothing, there's no more, no less money for anything that we have charged previously. This is just going to make sure that now any, any tenant or any, any potential applicant, as they apply, that they make sure that what number is in the use table matches this, this fee.
And then kind of a future action is to look at the fees to see if they're consistent with what other towns are doing.
That's what I was.
Okay.
My next question.
Didn't have time to do that. I mean, we want to put this into effect immediately.
That's low hanging fruit, we can do that, so, next.
I just don't see, because we had added through the use table breweries. I don't see that listed on.
That's a good question, go ahead, staff.
We actually discussed that. I think at this time, we, you know, we haven't really had the time to discuss how much it would be. It would probably fall under like a restaurant use, if they're going to have food, that that would be part of the application, but that is definitely something that we did discuss internally about how to handle that type of thing, because it's not just us, it's the select board, it's like.
Fair, yeah.
It's also something to reach out to other communities to see how they handle it.
So like a second iteration?
Yes, this is, this, yes.
Here you, Mr., so I would tell the board members that this is to make sure that kind of, for the time being, that we're all set. And that to expect, and kind of a changes to this, that kind of both relooking at the existing fees on, on permits and uses that are already there, to ensure that it's, matches what, what should be the amount paid, as well as the new uses that were just added, as far as if they fit into something that's here, if they need their own little table, kind of how that would be, that that's something we need to look at, but this was just the time being to get it up to date.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Okay, great, next up.
Yes, Matt, I think.
We need to vote on it to accept it, aren't we?
Should we vote on it?
To be safe, I would.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we vote to approve the updated fee schedule to go into effect immediately.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Middle housing discussion, can we keep the discussion to a couple of minutes? Because then we're going to create a subcommittee, we would have all sorts of great discussion in that, staff?
So based on, so we've done, we've kind of been meddling with this middle housing and the best way to approach it. I know that Barbara and I and, through you, Mr. Chair, we've been talking about 40R districts. I recently, when I met with Lisa Mead, our town council, we had looked at, you know, 40Y districts, if these are already created districts and trying to have, how to figure out and tool them. I've been looking at other towns. One town that I looked at recently was the city of North Hampton, and they have like village center districts and kind of just looking at how other communities handle this. But that, you know, I think it's going to be really helpful for me to get like a basic under, basic poll of kind of what each one of you guys understands as middle housing and what you would be looking for in such a bylaw, so that I can go and find one to either kind of adapt or create on our own.
And I think what we talked about was, was biting off little, little bits at a time, so we're not going across, and this, this was a result of the town meeting approving MBTA communities with the existing multifamily housing there, and then, you know, indicating that now we can do on our own time, where we want to do it is not dictated by the state and to kind of improves the housing mix for folks that are seniors that want to stay, young families, things like that. So the, the actions would be definition, right? And, and get that, a couple of key parcels approved by town meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Loro.
First of all, I would like to volunteer to be on this subcommittee. It's something that I really want to be involved in, and I've, I've been working with staff on it for quite some time when I was chair, so I'd really like to continue in that effort. I think there's a discussion to be had about the strategy as to when we present this to town meeting. I personally think that it would be a mistake to present this to town meeting at the same time as the Mall Road rezoning, because I think that's just too much housing all at once, and the two of them might compete with one another. So I'm, I'm a little torn about this, because on one hand, I'm told that Ms. Melissa Tentaklis is going to be bringing home, bringing forward the mall rezoning in September. I don't know if that's actually going to happen. So personally, I would like to be ready to bring this forwarded in September, and then if the mall rezoning goes in September, we can withdraw and go in January. But if we don't, if we aren't ready to go in September, and then mall zoning gets pushed back to January, now we either have to go at the same time, or we have to get pushed to May, and May's never a good time to do zoning. So that's my concern, and that's why I'm a little worried about, I like the plan that town council presented earlier, but we would not be able to follow that schedule if we tried to get this ready for September. It's very sooner.
Very soon.
I'm not going to lie about that. Yeah.
Yeah.
If we have the goal and people are enthusiastic about it, then it could happen. Yes, go ahead, member report.
I'm supportive of Barbara being, you know, kind of spearheading that. This is something she's been quite passionate about for a long time, so, um, I, I support her if the rest of the board does.
Any other folks that want to be on that subcommittee?
I second the support.
Okay.
Well, I can't be on a subcommittee alone.
Any other members?
Yes.
Mr. Cavino and Ms. LaRue.
Okay, great.
Excellent. We'll take two, and then we'll, we'll, we can decide with the subcommittee.
Okay.
Yep, we'll have, yep, we'll have.
I will call you, and we'll pick a time.
And then I, I would encourage we, we bring in other folks that have interest in that as well.
Agreed.
Maybe some land use available or.
Housing partnership.
Housing partnership, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we, I mean.
If we can get, if we can get, yeah, but if we can get the definition right to that, and then we say, here's what our proposed plan is, and we get some buy-in there, that might be, that might work.
Yeah, I mean, it probably is impossible to do in September. I'm just very worried that if the mall rezoning gets pushed back to January.
Let's just, let's put it on, let's put it into that, let's put it into that.
And you do next.
We have, but once, but at least it's on the, the, we can always pull back.
Yep.
But if it's on there, we, we have time to push it.
I can put in, I can definitely put in a placeholder.
Yes.
And I also do want to say through you, Mr. Chair, um, you know, if we're going to do this, I, you know, we do only have two meetings in, in the summertime. So we have June twentieth, and then we have one meeting in July, and one meeting in August. Um, and, you know, by September first, like Lynn is ready to hit the print button, you know. So, um, you know, I, if we want to do this, I will probably need to, you know, addition, either like definitely additional, um, subcommittee meetings, but if we're going to do it, I might, we might need additional special planning board meeting, and, you know, so I just want to be upfront with you guys about it.
With you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So you have to put a placeholder in, in two weeks.
Right.
For the definition and for an overlay. But then we would have the rest of the summer to actually work out the details, because it doesn't get printed till September one, is that correct?
Yes, but we would need to have a public hearing before it gets printed.
Right.
And.
That would have to be in August.
Would have to be the August meeting.
July or August, yeah.
Okay, we still got time.
It, it, I know it's unlikely. I think we can always strive for it with the understanding that it's, yeah.
I mean, I, I, you know.
I think, I think part of the, the problem is probably that I've been thinking about it for so long that I feel ready.
Put it, put it on paper.
That doesn't mean anyone else.
Put it on paper. Give it a show, let's go.
Number four.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is approve of an insignificant change. So, like I said, I'd want to keep a bit of transparency and let the folks know that other than lines being changed for power lines or, or facility changes, uh, I approved a, for two additional, uh, electric vehicle spots in town hall. No, no additional transformers or, or switches or anything like that. So.
Perfect.
That's just information there.
Thank you.
Committee appointments. Um, so we're time for committee appointments. I think just the, the chair appoints except for recreation. Is that correct? There has to be a vote on recreation, or, Ernie, you mentioned that earlier?
Yeah, as far as I remember, I, I think they're all chair appointments.
Your, yeah.
All chair appointments, and I think we have traditionally voted on the recreation one because it comes with a stipend.
Aha.
Oh, I didn't know that.
There we go.
Right?
So.
That's the reason we've done that?
That sounds like the reason, but.
But the other ones, I, I thought, the, at least when I was chair, I know.
Sure, it's so large, mom.
Let's do that. Let's, let's move forward then, committee appointments. Uh, land use committee, who currently had that one? Anybody know?
I, I went a few times, but they would never tell me of their meetings. It's the craziest thing.
Okay.
I gave the guy my email, he never.
So that's Toni Ann.
If you want to, when, when, you're out?
I'm going to do, I'm going to stay with the housing.
Okay, um, so anybody else interested in land use committee?
Housing partnership.
Okay, if not, I'll take that one.
Okay.
Okay, I, and land use, I think, is, you know, the chairman there, I can maybe have a bit of influence there. Um, so zoning bylaw review committee, I know that's.
Yeah, I'd probably like to stay there for a few years, thank you.
Anybody else have, want to fight Ernie on that one?
No.
Okay, didn't think so. Recreation commission, anybody?
Is that you, Recreation?
It was. Does anybody else interested in Recreation?
I would like to.
Brenda?